White Marsh Township, please continue to be patient while these much-needed improvements are being performed. Number one, the county's Ridge Pike Improvement Project continues along Ridge Pike in White Marsh Township with lane restrictions in both directions. A section of Baron Hill Road at Ridge Pike is closed as part of the county's Ridge Pike Improvement Project as well. Aqua continues replacing a water main on Joshua Road between Ridge Pike and Cedar Grove Lane. Lane restrictions are scheduled for 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. through September. The eastbound lane of Skipback Pike between Butler Pike and Sheaf Lane is closed until September 27th for work being performed by Texas Eastern Pipeline. On Saturday, September 23rd, from 11:00 to 2:00, the Parks and Rec Department will host a Touch a Truck event at Miles Park. This is a huge event that's very popular. Pre-registration on our website is required due to limited parking. Don't forget to pick up your tree from the tree giveaway event on Saturday, September 30th. All 260 trees have been claimed. Planning instructions and tree information, along with your time slot for pickup, will be provided to you through your email. And I believe there's a waiting list if you so desire to get on the waiting list in case someone doesn't come and pick up a tree. And if there's one available, it could be yours. A shredding event will be held at Miles Park on Saturday, October 7th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon for residents of White Marsh Township. That's all I have.
Thanks, J.C. All right, we're going to start tonight with a public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to review the ordinance amendment to the White Marsh Township official map allowing Washington Street through to Lee Street?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting is now open. Hearing is now open. Mr. Kilken.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do I have this? Hold on, okay, good. Thank you very much. As you stated, you have opened a public hearing related to the amendment to the official map. There are, what I'm going to go ahead for the record is go ahead and admit some exhibits, so that we have them in the record and our court reporter can note them to call, to have all these, make sure we satisfy all the legal requirements of this hearing. Then there will be a brief presentation from our zoning officer, Mr. Gottenplan. There'll be an opportunity for board comment. There'll be an opportunity for public comment. Then the board can close the hearing and take action if they so choose, as you have a later agenda item on this. Or you can continue the hearing if you are not satisfied to a later date and get more information. But what I'm going to do right now is I am going to put some exhibits in the record. T1 will be the draft ordinance will be Exhibit A. T2 will be the proof publication in the Times Herald, August 30th, 2023, and September 6th, 2023. T3 will be the Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letter, dated July 28th, 2023. T4 will be the Conchocan Borough Letter of Support, dated August 1st, 2023. T5 will be the Transmittal of Ordinance to the County Law Library, letter of August 28th, 2023, date stamped August 29th, 2023. And T6 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission Recommendation Draft Minutes of Meeting, August 8th, and a recommended approval. Mr. Gottenplan?
Thank you. This is, as you've heard, an amendment to the official map of the township. It would be a potential, show us a potential extension of Washington Street from where it will currently end at 901 Washington Street to where it would, excuse me, it would intersect with Lee Street. Am I sharing?
Not yet.
Sorry. This graphic shows you the extent of the recommended amendment. It begins here at the end of what is 901 Washington Street, where River Place is currently beginning construction on their townhouses. When that is completed, Washington Street will be officially extended to the end of their property. And then the amendment would suggest that Washington Street extend through the David's Bridle property, tie into Lee Street, and eliminate the dead-end situation that is currently on Washington Street. This is, would be a great safety improvement, and it's one that has been recommended in our spring mill multimodal and land use study and prior studies of the spring mill area and our comprehensive plan. An official map is a planning tool that's recognized in the municipality's planning code, just like the zoning ordinance and subdivision land development ordinance. It's a manner in which the township puts on record what their intentions and wishes are for roads and other public properties that they may want to implement in the future. And the effect of that essentially is that if there is a development proposal that is filed for property on which there is an official map property designated, in this case, a road, it gives the township a year to negotiate with the developer for methods to implement that improvement, in this case, a road extension. So that's really the advantage of having a road or other public improvements on an official map. And this, as I say, is an extension of a road that has been, long been planned in the township. The Planning Commission reviewed this at two of their meetings. At their August meeting, you heard in the exhibits that there was a recommendation for approval of this amendment. And if this amendment will go through, it would be get added to the township's official map, which has actually been in existence since 1969.
All right, thanks, Charlie. Makes sense. Do we have any board comment questions? Any public comment questions? Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing is now closed. I'm just going to jump down to the ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1031, amending the White Marsh Township official map, allowing Washington Street through to Lee Street?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from August 10th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move into public discussion items. So we're going to review SLD number 10-22, Rebecca Pedro and Karen Schrader, Montgomery Animal Hospital, 827 Bethlehem Pike, minor land development, amended plan, parking lot expansion, and other improvements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ed Hughes. I represent the applicant who regarded this proposal at 827 Bethlehem Pike. It's the Montgomery Animal Hospital. Their proposal is to improve their parking, the exterior look to the property. We've been to the Planning Commission twice, got a recommendation of approval, subject to submission of a landscape plan to the Shade Tree Commission, which was done and approved, and also recommended the grant of all the waivers and preliminary final approval. We got a draft resolution and were accepted, that's acceptable to us. We're prepared to sign it this evening if it's approved by the supervisors.
All right, is there any board comment or board questions? Charlie, want to go through it?
Yeah, maybe Mr. Gottenplan can just orient folks with what is being done there, or Mr. Hughes.
Yeah, there are two parcels here. I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties. I didn't listen to everything Ed said, so if I repeat it, I apologize. But there are two parcels here. The Animal Hospital has historically owned and been developed and using parcel A where their building and parking is, and they more recently acquired parcel B, which is a very linear parcel immediately adjacent to their facility, had been a PICO substation and property had actually been owned by Springfield Township. Once the Animal Hospital acquired it, they are interested in having additional parking, and they are formalizing and expanding parking on that lot as well as behind the Animal Hospital on parcel A. Because of the nature particularly of parcel B and having floodplain and riparian issues, there were a number of zoning issues that were taken to the zoning hearing board early this year. They received relief for all the issues that they needed relief for, and once they did that, they were in front of the Planning Commission on two occasions, and the last time they were at the Planning Commission in August. I don't know what happened here. In any event, when they were at the Planning Commission in August, the Planning Commission made two recommendations, one for the waivers that were required and the other for approval of the plan. I didn't touch anything.
No, no. It's all, it's all, Jim, it's all, Jim.
All right. Thanks, Charlie. So it has all, went through planning, planning was good with it?
Yeah.
All right, any board comments?
What was Shade Tree's comments?
I'm sorry?
Shade Tree, what did they have to say about it?
Yeah.
What were their recommendations?
For approval.
Is there a landscape plan that they approved?
The waiver recommendation was conditioned upon them providing a landscape plan which the Shade Tree Commission wanted, which showed one additional tree to be planted.
Okay.
And we did do that, and it was approved by Shade Tree Commission.
That was the only condition recommended.
I was at the Shade Tree Commission meeting, and yeah, the nature of the property in and of itself is tough to, you know, to put more trees on, so I understood the point.
All right, any other board comment? Public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-21, granting conditional preliminary finer, final minor land development approval for SLD number 10-22, Rebecca Pedro and Karen Schrader, Montgomery Animal Hospital, 827 Bethlehem Pike, for a parking lot expansion and other improvements?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
I don't think we're up, I don't know if we're up.
Did we lose Zoom?
No, she's, no, she's on.
We're all. Patrice, can you hear me?
It's four oh.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Congratulations, thank you.
I guess we'll get the resolution to sign at some point.
You'll receive a copy and sign.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
And good luck.
The next board public discussion item, we'll review SLD number 06-23, the Highlands Historical Society, 7111 Sheaf Lane, minor subdivision, preliminary final plan, lot So, to Charlie?
I couldn't begin it. I think, did you bring a paper copy, did you say?
Charlie, we have a paper copy. She's got it. I have two small ones I can hand out.
I will start and give a very quick synopsis and then let Kate Harper speak on this. This is a lot line change. It involves a number of lots on 51 acres. There is no posed development as part of this. This is adjustment to certain lots at 711 Sheaf Lane. The main purpose of the subdivision is to avoid development and to preserve open space as an alternative. You may recall that there was a proposal which is still on hold for 46 homes on a portion of this property. If this subdivision goes through in conjunction with a conservation easement that the board has committed to earlier this year, as well as other conditions that have to be met, there'd be no development occurring on the site. Several lot lines would be changed so that there would be all parcels of at least 10 acres. The 29-acre conservation easement would be implemented that the township provided for. A couple of the lots could be built on with one single-family house in the future. And I can now put this up. Okay. What you're looking at is the lot line change plan. And there, Skipback Pike is out here, Sheaf Lane is down here. This is the old Alter Mansion parcel. These are two lots that access off a private driveway off of Skipback Pike. These lot lines are not being affected. There are minor changes to lot lines here and here to enlarge this lot, so that this lot would have a minimum of 10 acres. This lot would maintain a little bit more than 10 acres, and the mansion lot would also maintain a little bit more than 10 acres. All in all, the only lots that could develop in the future with a single-family house on each lot would be the mansion, if it were taken down, another single-family house could be built there in its place. Parcel 5 could have one single-family home, and parcel 3 the same. And there are certain conditions that would be on these parcels that if developed, they can only be developed in certain portions of the less environmentally constrained portions of those lots. But this plan does not envision that development. It only envisions changing a few lot lines to implement the open space preservation goals, allow the various conservation easements to be implemented, and to avoid further development of the site. And the only thing I'll add before I turn it over to Kate is that, once this is done, in conjunction with the Highlands, the open space here, and the Whisickin Trails portion next door that fronts on Butler Pike, there'd be 170-plus or minus acres of open space that would be preserved permanently as part of this process. Kate Harper?
Yeah, thanks. My name's Kate Harper. I'm here on behalf of the Highlands Historical Society that put together the deal to save the whole 51 acres with limited development. So the plan you're looking at tonight doesn't create any new lots, actually. It moves lot lines around here and there. Three and five already exist. They're the ones that come out to Sheaf Lane, but there are 22 acres in total, and we're moving the lot lines so that each is at least 10 acres, okay? And then, over towards Skipback Pike, the open space parcel that the township is helping the Highlands purchase, the township's already indicated a willingness to give a grant from the Open Space Fund for that, and it'll be owned by the Highlands and joined to the Highlands Historical Society mansion property, where the township already has an easement on the meadow that's near Skipback Pike. This will join to that. So what we're doing really is jiggering lot lines to move things around a little, so that at the end of the day, three and five are each 10 acres. Lot 4A, which has the Dennis Alter House on it, is 10 acres, and each one of them can only have one single-family dwelling and whatever residential accessories you can have. And at the end of the day, that's 51 acres that's largely conserved, and also has a direct connection from the Highlands to Willow Lake, which is, which is conserved land on Butler Pike. You can see it's a horse farm. That's conserved land, belongs to the Whisickin Watershed Association. And so what this plan does is just move lot lines around so that we can make that connection and save most of the land. It was proposed for development by Mr. Gobin and Mr. Peon, and we do have an agreement with them to buy it. So that's why we're here tonight.
All right, thanks, Kate. Do we have any board comment questions? Makes sense. Any public comment or questions?
Ooh, I meant to say one more thing, I'm sorry. Because we're moving lot lines around, we did have to get a new appraisal to support the grant, and we did do that. That is in your packets or rec can get it for you, but that does support it, that changing the lot lines doesn't affect the value of the land that you're helping us buy.
That's in the packets.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-22, granting conditional preliminary finer, final minor subdivision approval for SLD number 06-23, the Highlands Historical Society, 7111 Sheaf Lane, for a lot line adjustment?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
One more, one more step.
Welcome to take these. Keep them if you want, and we'll take them back, whatever you want. Okay, thank you. Did you want the big one?
Thank you. Good luck. One step at a time.
Paper copies, the question will be named.
Always.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-23, approving the 2024 minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniform pension plans in the combined amount of $1,202,288?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair McCusker. According to Act 205, the township's required to authorize the MMO, Minimum Mean Spot Obligation, by September 30th of each calendar year. That is why this is always on the September agenda. The police pension plan, it's a defined benefit plan. Those provisions are set by the Act 600. With, in accordance with this year, or excuse me, next year, 2024, their MMO, or their requirement would be approximately $1.4 million. The officers contribute 5% to the pension. That comes out to about $231,000. So the amount that the police pension plan would have to contribute to the MMO is 1.4, a little over $1.2 million. The non-uniformed employee plan is a defined contribution plan. Township matches up to 6% of the employees' compensation. The total amount for that is $288,163. There is also a $50,000 provision for administrative expenses. Combined MMO plans are 1.4, a little over $1.4 million. Compared this to 2023, the amount is almost double. The 2023 amount was $631,000. Why is that? Because we have a valuation done every odd year. So the last valuation was done in 2021. Those years, returns were good on investment. 2023 is looking back to 2022. We all know that that was a very difficult year within the stock market. Therefore, it requires, we did not hit our numbers in terms of return on investment, so we have to put up more money in order to make the police pension, really it's the police pension plan, more solvent. So the MMO is going to be significantly higher and impacts our 2024 budget a little over double of what it would have been last year. So the amount would be $1,490,451.
Thanks, Mr. Mellor. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Mellor, please call the roll.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Ordinance carries. We'll move down to motions. Do I have a motion to authorize disbursement of $277,281.51 and future contributions to the FIRE Capital Fund to Baron Hill Volunteer Fire Company up to the delivery of the new fire apparatus?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mellor?
This has been before the Township's Emergency Services Board for review. They reviewed the request of Baron Hill Volunteer Fire Company. They are, have been working on putting together specs for a new tower ladder replacement. They've been working on this for the better part of the last year. They've settled on the type of ladder and the manufacturer and have at least instructed them to begin the construction of this fire apparatus. This fire apparatus is going to be expected to take 33 to 38 months to deliver, so three-plus years before they will ever see the apparatus and it be in use. That said, the township does have a FIRE Capital Fund that's split between the two fire companies. The Baron Hill Volunteer Fire Company requested the amount that is currently in there, that's the $277,281.51, and any future contributions that are made for their portion up to the point in which they actually have to pay the invoice for the fire apparatus. This was reviewed by the Emergency Services Board and recommended for that motion to the board.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks, Mr. Mellor. Do we have any board comment or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize Change Order Number 1 for the 2023 Road Program to end Abinizio Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $44,763.22 for providing additional paving work?
So moved. Second.
I'll take this one.
All right, Krista.
As you know, we are working on the 2023 Road Improvements Program. The request before you is a request to increase the contract amount in the amount of $44,763.22. And much of this is largely due to, as the work was progressing, some of the trenching for the PICO work across the street went beyond the limits of what was expected. Another part of this amount is the driveway entrance to the building here. We're recommending that to be paved because to get the rain garden to accept roof drainage, we had to trench across the driveway. So that allowed us to make that rain garden much more effective. That's the gist of it, and we're recommending that you approve this.
Thanks, Krista. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number 7 for River Place 901 Washington Street in the amount of $177,010.15?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
This is our monthly escrow release request for River Place. Much of the work that they're requesting is still just excavating a little bit of paving and some water main work in the amount of $177,001.15. And after this release, there will be remaining in escrow $1,139,978.1. And we're recommending that you authorize this release.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Public comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $868,923.30 and payroll totaling $684,553.23 and pension paid costs totaling $3,917.42 for August and July? Just August of 2023. Mr. Mellor, we're going to have to have somebody go through the papers. This is a few misprints on here. Come on. Was this done, I think it's done on purpose. Anyway.
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That'll bring us to the public comment period. Any public comment? Mr. Shin?
My name is Edmund Shin. I live at 7032 Lafayette Avenue. This board and the township staff have been so helpful with this project we're working on over on Chief Lane, deserve this land. And I think it's very fitting how you summarily approved the police pension increase, which makes this township so wonderful. And I just can't say enough about the work that you're doing and your staff is doing on a daily basis. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Shin, for recognition. Appreciate that. Our staff does do a great job. I second, definitely the board seconds that.
Absolutely.
We're very fortunate.
Can you come and speak at every meeting?
Do we have any other public comment? All right. Board comment? I will say something real fast about our meetings. Krista, Jack and I have had about, and JC was there for stormwater management. It's stormwater management season and, you know, a lot of our residents are coming forward with some issues. And we were specifically down on Center Avenue where we heard a very dramatic story, you know, about the pains of stormwater. And, you know, we got to work on a lot of things here, that's for sure. And we got to figure out how we're going to do some of these jobs. But, you know, we hear all the pain out there and we're doing our best to like get it done for everybody. Just want to let everybody know that we're, we're really here to help. And sometimes government doesn't work as fast as we'd like it, but we are here to help and we're going to do our best to help everybody out there. So that's it. Thank you. Your public comment?
Was it, so I thought public comment was on the left top of the screen. I apologize.
You want to come up, Joe?
Would like to come up.
Yeah, sure.
And there's probably a better way to do this, but I'm bringing it back to the board supervisors because this is the last time I was here on this and I'm looking for an update. So a couple.
Can you just state your name?
My name is Joe Downey, 3071 Kerper Road, Lafayette Hill. I've moved in in 98. You know, been, I think, a good member of the community here and tried to do the right thing. The last meeting I was at, attended here, didn't go so well. It was online here and it was over 6:00. Hold on, 6:08, 6:09 Germantown. The building right down the street here where they are now doing training for the fire department, right? So the fire department, the volunteer fire department, God bless them, right? They need a building that's abandoned that they can go in and out of and do some training in. It's the doctor's office next to the bank frame. And there was the former board chair told us what good, you know, citizens these guys were that were going to run it. And I was, you know, pushing and pushing to ask about what are they doing? Like the property is in really poor repair. It's a hazard that I think to the community. God forbid a kid gets in there, right? We're banning, we're banning plastic bags, but we're not going down here and looking at like, and we got to walk right by it. You guys got to drive by that. How can you, how can you let that go? So I'm asking for what would be the path for somebody to tell me what is going on there? And when's it going to be taken care of? Are these guys up in court? Are they out of money? But they want to build this big building down there. And my concern is they can't manage what they have now and it was approved by this board. To let them build something that probably doesn't belong on that site, at least that's my opinion in the first place. So I've just walked by it enough. And when I saw the volunteer fire department training out there, I said, hey, that's a great idea, but this is insanity.
Got you.
They train down there.
Rick, do we have any updates on what's going on over there?
I don't believe they have recorded plans at this point. So they're still going through and trying to meet the conditions of approval that they received. So they're working on that until they're able to record their plans. As far as our emergency services, they very rarely get an opportunity to actually, you know, in real life, be able to train on various facilities. If people weren't notified, that's something that.
No, no, I have no issue with it. I think it's a good thing. I want to be very clear.
What Joe's saying here is he's, if the house, the place is like in disarray.
Like if they're using for that, it's not a fire. The home on Germantown Pike is not a place where you have a fire training center. I'm glad they're using it. That is, I have no issue necessarily with that. But in the principle of it, like the house has been left in such disrepair that that's what, hey, that's a good idea for it and these guys are doing it. You know, I'm glad they're resourceful enough to figure that out. That's not my issue.
We can look at it from the code enforcement standpoint, even though it has development rights on it, we, they still have to abide by the code. So we'll take a look at that and make sure we're enforcing the code on the property.
All right. And then so that they are still, if they comply to the conditions of whatever this is, do they come back through another hearing or anything like that?
No, no, they simply.
And that was the concern I had originally.
It's approved. They have approval as it was before to be able to build what they were approved to build. They have to meet the conditions.
Right.
They'll record plans and then they can hold permits and they can begin work.
I just encourage as, you know, because at least what you're saying here, they're within their rights of whatever they're doing. And as a former landlord, I understand that. But as you guys walk by, you have to look at this and say, what? Like there's got to be something here. The house is in disarray. God forbid a kid walks in there, somebody gets hurt.
Yeah, if it's not being secure, we'll look at that from a code enforcement standpoint. And, you know, we're eager to get them started so that you don't have that eyesore.
I'm asking you guys to take a walk around it. Just drive by when you go back. Just go through the bank or walk or whatever, but.
Rick, what's the timeframe that they have to submit plans by?
Do you know that, Krista?
I don't know that there is a specific time.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have plans that'll sit for, you know, several years while they're waiting to get conditions. Once they have approval, they have approval.
I know they were, they were waiting on some PennDOT permitting. That might be the holdup.
Yeah, because they needed to, you know, for curb cuts and access onto Germantown Pike. So this, this timeframe in which they were approved, this is very ordinary in terms of developers needing to, you know, go through the steps to get their conditions met.
Okay. Having, and again, my point is not the fact that the firemen are doing this, right? The fact that the house is in a condition where it's become a fire, it's, the good, the use for it now appears to be a fire training. It seems like there's something wrong here. There's something wrong with, with this process.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that they get over there and enforce code on them. You know?
Right. And hopefully the next group that comes through, you guys take a, you know, a hard look at as well, should they be doing this stuff, right? So.
All right.
It's been a couple of years like that, guys.
Thanks, Joe. I'd like to announce we had an executive meeting where we discussed real estate and personnel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.